This conference will now be recorded.
All right. The technical difficulties have been resolved, hopefully. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville, City Council Regular Meeting for April 19th, 2021. In accordance with Governor Pritzker's Disaster Proclamation and the determination by the Mayor of the City of Warrenville, this meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to provide public comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us by 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Of course, you also have the option to come to the meeting or to call in and be on the line. Note, again, this meeting is being recorded. We ask to reduce background noise that may prevent everyone from being able to hear the discussion. One, the city will mute all participants during the meeting. All participants will be unmuted for the public comment portion of the meeting. And of course, you can personally mute yourself when you're done speaking to help out with that. We begin, as always, with the roll call.
Mayor Brummel.
Here.
Alderman Anderson. Alderman Anderson.
Do not see him.
Okay, I'll come back to him. Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Christell.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Treasurer Brenner.
Here.
City Attorney Brooke Lenaman.
Here.
City Administrator John Cokely.
Here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White.
Here.
Police Chief Ray Toriano.
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand.
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer.
Here.
Public Works Director Phil Kukler.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. I have to say thank you, Emily, because I won't get to say that much more, so I'm going to get it in while I can. Okay, we are officially underway. We begin always with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I invite you to say it along with us at home.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we begin tonight, before we get to the business of the meeting, with a proclamation for Building Safety Month. Building Safety Month, May 2021, whereas the City of Warrenville, Illinois, is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens. And whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, and others in the construction industry who work to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these officials are dedicated members of the International Code Council, which brings together local, state, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings we occupy. And whereas these modern building codes are used by Warrenville to protect the public from natural disasters. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire protection, fire prevention, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I leave it all. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with the community in recognizing Building Safety Month. Okay. This is the portion of our meeting that we always set aside for citizens' comments. We have one person in the audience tonight to speak, so would you like to come up first, Bob?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. Last week, at the committee meeting, John Cokely spoke about the revenue from water and sewer hookup fees in Cantera. I request a review of these figures and the verification of the correct dollar amounts for the water and sewer hookup fees.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone who has sent in an email for the meeting? Previous? No? And do we have anyone on the phone who wishes to comment at this time? Okay, this is the last opportunity for public comment at the meeting. We will continue with official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. I have several things this evening. One, we have changed to the sticker buyback program, and I will ask Assistant City Administrator White to give the good news.
Thank you, Mayor. So initially, we had issued information about the buyback program that said we were only going to be accepting stickers purchased at City Hall since May 1st of 2020. Recently, we got some information that retailers, third-party retailers in town, are not taking back stickers. So we have amended that program. At beginning May 3rd, we will be taking stickers purchased from any of the third-party retailers for waste management, in addition to those that were originally sold at City Hall. So again, their only restriction there is that they have to be stickers that were purchased after May 1st of 2020 to present, but they can be from any retailer or City Hall, and they will be refunded. There will not be any cash refunds, so you will submit a form and the unused stickers, and a check will be sent to you at the address provided on the form.
Okay, and the last date to do that?
Is Friday, May 21st at 5:00 p.m.
Okay, so get it done before then. All right, very good. Thank you, Christina. Chief Torano, I want to ask you to give us the information on the two officers that have taken on some important duties outside the city. Are you with us tonight?
Yeah, Mayor, I am. And it's my pleasure to announce that Sergeants Josh Wittenberg and Sergeant Jeff Downey have been selected to the merit crisis negotiation team. This required them to go through a series of interviews and screenings and the vetting process. They will be assigned to the SWAT team. Whenever they are activated, they will go out and will receive additional specialized training in crisis negotiations and de-escalation techniques. And this is a wonderful career opportunity for them and also brings a whole new enhanced skill set to Warrenville. So congratulations to Sergeants Downey and Wittenberg.
Absolutely, Chief. Thank you so much. That is very good news.
Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you. A couple of other things. Remember, if you haven't gotten vaccinated yet, it is really, really good idea to do so at your earliest convenience. The sooner we are all vaccinated, the sooner we can get back to normal activities. Until everyone is vaccinated, it's important to continue to observe the three W's: wash your hands, wear facial coverings, and watch your distance. The closer we get to 100% vaccination, the sooner things will improve. Tonight is the final meeting for the city clerk, Emily Larson. She seems crestfallen. No, never mind. And Treasurer Brenner, as they chose not to run for office again. They will be honored for their service during the May 3rd council meeting that's coming up soon because of COVID-19 restrictions. A traditional public reception is not possible at this time, so I encourage everyone to thank them for the service to the community when you see them, any opportunity. I'm sure they will appreciate it. Other newly-elected officials and re-elected officials should plan to be present for the May 3rd council meeting to be sworn in during the start of the meeting. Further instructions will be sent out as we get closer to that date. Continuing officials can still join the meeting remotely. And this is good news for most of us who have spent way too much time isolated and not doing anything. The Mayor's Fitness Challenge begins again on May 3rd. This is our 10th year, maybe our most needed year, at least from my perspective it is. This is a program designed to inspire competitive nature and motivate residents to engage in some type of physical activity for at least 150 minutes a week. This year, the challenge will last 10 weeks, from May 3rd to July 10th. Registration is now open on the city website. In order to do that, you click on "How do I", and then click on "Register for", and then click on "Mayor's Fitness Challenge". And there's also information on how to do this in the city newsletter and the city Facebook page, if you didn't get that tonight. So let's all get off to a good start and see if we can get back to a fitness level that we saw maybe before the isolation. Certainly worth a try. Begins May 3rd again. That's all I have for this evening. Emily, just a big smile tonight is all she has for us.
Just a big smile. Everybody says it, but I cannot believe what happened to 20 years. And it has been awesome, and I'm not going away, so... Thank you for everybody's support. I really appreciate it. It's a teamwork, believe me. Thank you.
You will be missed, but you won't be leaving town. That's the news. All right, excellent. Larry, Treasurer.
In honor to serve, or honor out?
Thank you, Larry. And we'll see you around town, too. The Aldermen. Your opportunity to start the meeting with something to say, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
No questions or comments today.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
I would just like to congratulate Emily on 20 years of being a very, very successful clerk. We appreciated everything she's done for us, especially me, for these last many years. And she will definitely be missed. Good luck, Emily, in your retirement.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, would just like to say thank you to Emily and Larry, both competent public servants and lots of fun to work with. So you will both be missed. I also just want to take an opportunity publicly, since later in this meeting we'll be voting on our 2022 budget, to just do a general thank you to staff at this point. I have talked to many of them during this process and have been helped by explanations and advice. And this was such a tough year with the pandemic, just knowing how to protect, going ahead, trying to figure the numbers out in a different way, trying to balance everything out. I think a lot more work has gone into this than perhaps the general public really understands. So I personally would like to say thank you to our whole staff.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Most of what I have is a repeat of what's been said. I want to thank Larry and Emily for their hard work and for so well-representing our city. And I also want to make note of the fact that as of yesterday, the World Health Organization let us all know that we have passed the 3 million mark in terms of COVID deaths worldwide. And we know it's higher than that, but 3 million people that we know of have been lost, which is a sobering thing to think about. Our focus is often on deaths here in DuPage County or sometimes deaths in Illinois or the United States, but this is a very global and international issue. And since I have many friends and family members who live abroad, I think it's important to keep in mind how much is happening in the rest of the world when it comes to COVID and how we really all need to be safe in order for any of us to be safe. So I hope that we will all work to help one another get through this wherever we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Christell.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Widener.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Clerk Larson for her nearly, or two decades of service to the City of Warrenville. And to thank Mr. Brenner for his dedication to help with the city's finances during his period of time as Treasurer. And it would be, under normal circumstances, I think we would stand up and give a standing ovation to each of them. So hopefully, they can, through the magic of guided imagery, picture us all standing up and clapping for them and celebrating their great years of service to the city. Secondly, I noticed on tonight's agenda that there's many recommendations and approvals for reappointments of chairpersons and commissioners for the many volunteer groups that help the city out with their donation. And they also provide a lot of dedicated involvement, attending meetings and special events, and provide the city with a lot of expertise. And specifically, these are members and chairpersons of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, the Environmental Advisory Commission, the Tourism and Arts Commission, and the Police Pension Fund Board. We thank all those folks for their dedicated service. Thank you. That's all I had.
Well said, Alderman. Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
No additional. Everything's been said that I agree with, so no additional comments.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to the City Administrator, John.
Thank you. Just in keeping with the spirit of everything tonight, congratulations to Emily and to Larry. I know we will still see Emily. I actually expect she'll be coming to every council meeting to make comments and citizen comments, but I'm not sure about that yet. And Larry, I know we will miss you at... We haven't seen you for a year since we're doing virtual meetings, but we will still be able to find you because I know you're still going to be a crossing guard with your service to the community. Okay.
AV and Continental.
Thank you. But congratulations to both of you. And I know we will honor you a little more formally at next week's meeting. Thank you. Yes, two weeks, May 3rd, at the council meeting. Thank you. No meeting next week.
Okay. City Attorney Brooke.
I have no comment tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. May I have a motion, please? Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you. Move to approve the agenda for the April 19th, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Motion is second. Are there any changes that anyone would like to make to the agenda for this evening? Please speak up. Very nice. We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Christell.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. Motion passes, and the agenda is approved as presented. We have the need to approve two sets of minutes also this evening. Alderman Widener.
Motion to approve the minutes of the April 5th, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the April 12th, 2021 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Any discussion of those minutes? Please speak up. Very nice. May I have a roll call again, please, Emily?
Alderman Christell.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The minutes are approved as presented also. The consent agenda for this evening. Get comfortable. We're going A to Z tonight. Item 6A, Accept Staff Recommendation, Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02021-10, Establishing a Schedule of Job Classifications and Authorized Personnel Strength for FY 2022. B, Accept Staff Recommendation, Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02021-11, Amending City Code Section 3-26-2, Reducing the Number of Massage Establishment Business Licenses. C, Accept Staff Recommendation, Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02021-12, Amending City Code Section 3-2-7, To Reduce the Number of Class B3 and E Liquor Licenses and Increase the Number of Class B2 Liquor Licenses. D, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation, Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02021-13, Authorizing a 10% Water Rate Increase and a 20% Sewer Rate Increase, Both Effective May 1st, 2021. E, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation, Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02021-14, Authorizing Disposal of City-Owned Surplus Property by Open-Off Auction Services or e-Scrap Technologies. F, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2021-23, Approving a Five-Year Contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for Police Body-Worn Cameras in the Amount of $210,746.60. G, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2021-24, Extending the Duration of the March 16th, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the City Council. H, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation to Waive Competitive Bidding Requirements and Pass Resolution R2021-25, Approving the Purchase of New Street Light Poles from KSA Lighting Incorporated in Connection with the City Roadwork in the Amount of $80,815. I, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2021-26, Approving a Contract with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for the West One Basin Infiltration and Inflow Investigation in the Amount of $39,748. J, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2021-27, Approving a Contract with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for the Central One Basin Infiltration and Inflow Investigation in the Amount of $53,796. K, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Adopt a Safety Committee Housekeeping Policy Effective Immediately. L, Accept Staff Recommendation and Improve the FY 2022 Decision Packages for Inclusion in the FY 2022 Budget. M, Accept Staff Recommendation and Improve a 1.10% FY 2022 Market-Based Increase for Non-Union Employees as Included in the FY 2022 Budget. N, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Improve the Reappointment of Jerry Sugru as Chairman of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a One-Year Term Set to Expire April 30th, 2022. O, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Improve the Reappointment of Sarah Anderson as Chairman of the Environmental Advisory Commission for a One-Year Term Set to Expire April 30th, 2022. P, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Improve the Reappointment of Monica Johnson as Chairman of the Tourism and Arts Commission for a One-Year Term Set to Expire April 30th, 2022. Q, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Improve the Reappointment of Jerry Sugru, Commissioner of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a Three-Year Term Set to Expire April 30th, 2024. R, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Improve the Reappointment of Harland Davis, Commissioner of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a Three-Year Term Set to Expire April 30th, 2024. S, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Improve the Reappointment of Kathy Frankie and Bob Conera, Commissioners of the Environmental Advisory Commission for Three-Year Terms Set to Expire April 30th, 2024. T, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Improve the Reappointment of Julie Schaubach, Commissioner of the Tourism and Arts Commission for a Three-Year Term Set to Expire April 30th, 2024. U, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Improve the Reappointment of Charles Schultz, Trustee of the Pension, the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees for a Two-Year Term Set to Expire April 30th, 2023. V, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Improve the Appointment of Michael Spain as Emergency Management Coordinator. W, Receive and File Minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting Held on April 8th, 2021. X, Receive and File Report of Invoices Paid Up to April 14th, 2021 in the Amount of $40,119.80. Y, Authorize Expenditures for Invoices Due Honor Before May 3rd, 2021 in the Amount of $130,578.50. And Z, Receive and File Report of Master Debit Card Expenditures for the Month of March, 2021 in the Amount of $12,223.83. May I have a motion and a second? Please do approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. That was quite a recitation from A to Z. Appreciate it. And with that, I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented by Mayor Brummel. Second, Alderman Ashauer.
Motion and a second. Once again, may I have a roll call, Emily?
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman. Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
There we go. Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Christell.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The consent agenda is approved as presented. We'll move on to the regular agenda for this evening. Item 7A. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
Alderman Widener moves to offer the Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02021-09, Adopting the City of Warrenville Fiscal Year 2022 Budget.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion begin with City Administrator Cokely.
Thank you. And then I'll turn it over to our Finance Director for some detail updates. As was noted earlier, this was the most difficult budget that I have been a part of in 30, 35 years in municipal government. You all know why. Declining revenues, changing environment constantly. You all know why, declining revenues, changing environment constantly, but it is balanced. It is here. We are, we have what we believe is a sustainable budget. We also, as I have noted, we, speaking for our finance director and I, believe that our revenues are probably conservatively projected. They're very sound. We believe that that will be no less than what we're projecting in overall, through the budget, overall, Kevin, not each one. It's okay. But we think that the economy will be better, and there is signs that things will start to return as travel and returns, people get vaccinated, and we have more immunity to this virus. So we believe that we're in good stead. When you look long-term, we are still in very good stead in the, in the city financially, but we will have a couple of conservative years that we need to get through to recover the loss of last year.
Excuse me, I have to, I'm, excuse me, this is Alderman Berry. I have to get off the call. Our fire alarm just went off. So I'm leaving the meeting at the moment.
I'm being heckled. When you don't even, when the canine population, you're in real trouble. Anyway, so there's a lot in the budget. The city still has a lot of, a lot of positive things going on, a lot of development, a lot of things that have been invested in over the last, I think, decade or more in the TIFs and other places, and they will begin to make big returns to the city as was planned. You can see that in the longer range projections that we have in the TIFs and payback to the general fund. There's, there's other things we have to do a lot of work on with the enterprise maintenance replacement plan for the enterprise fund. There are water and sewer rates in this year, and we will have more presentations about those in, in coming meetings, coming months. The capital maintenance replacement plan needs continued scrutiny. We have Alderman working with staff on all of those things. But for tonight and for this budget approval, again, it is balanced. It reflects all the things in the city, positive and all the challenges, but I think that's probably it for the moment. I will turn it over to Kevin to give a couple of updates on whatever may have changed since it was presented on March first, and I know that there's one more that we just changed this afternoon in terms of a heading in the back of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Finance Director Dollstrand, welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I also want to thank everyone for their help and support. Everybody on staff worked extremely hard to get this done. I personally put in a lot of hours, and I know other members of staff did too. We would not have accomplished this without a full team effort of everyone involved, so I want to thank all of them, and I want to thank the council for your support. This too was the hardest budget I've worked on in the thirty-three or so years I've been doing this as well. I've never seen anything like this, as you can well imagine, and I've also not seen a team effort like this either that pulled together way beyond anywhere we've been before, and we've always had a great team effort here, and this one was above and beyond anything else we've done in the past. There were no big changes we made to any of the numbers since the first reading. I could go through and make changes forever in this thing as we fine tune and go on. There's no point in doing all of that because you change one thing up and one thing down. There weren't any big, huge things that we needed to change, so there were no changes made since that first time around. There is a correction which we will make in the decision path packages pages of the budget. When I got down to the end of preparing it originally, I neglected to remove one of the non-funded decision path packages off of the funded page. I managed to get it onto the non-funded pages of the book, but I also left it in error in the air on the funded pages. So when we issue the final replacement pages, I will make sure I make that correction as well. And finally, the police department pointed out to me very late this afternoon that one of the detailed sheets in their department, which is the detailed sheet that covers the expenses for National Night Out, that one little block of details was omitted, so I will make sure that that is in there as well. It's in the total departmental numbers. It's just missing the one detail sheet we need to show what exactly those expenditures are made up of. So I'll make sure that gets into our final pay, pay, pay pages when we issue those. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you to your team. John, additional comments?
Yes, just, I was remiss in not expressing my appreciation to everybody. I don't think Kevin slept from November through at least February. He was here almost all the time. We asked, we put in a few more hours because I think he actually squeezed in an hour of sleep once in a while. But everybody that was involved, the whole senior staff, elected officials that were involved in a lot of pieces of it, not just the meetings that you were at, and all of the staff across the board did a great job. And we told them, this is going to be a difficult year, so just start looking to scale back things, and they all performed admirably, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, John. I'd like to add my appreciation for the hard work that the team put in. Clearly, it was a year that we hope not to repeat ever again, but we've learned a lot of lessons, and going forward, I think we're going to be stronger and better for the things that we've gone through, and the appreciation, of course, is for the teamwork because accomplishing what we've accomplished in terms of this budget would not happen without a lot of people contributing. So we need to recognize that again and again and again. So thank you so much. We'll go to the Alderman now for comments or questions, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to commend the team. You mentioned it, Finance Director, but I think it's also worth restating, going through an ERP change while you're also trying to do a budget is incredibly challenging and complex task. The things aren't where you expect them to be, and there's a lot to learn. So I think having it in a normal year would have been a challenge, but having it in a difficult year with an ERP change, I just want to thank you, thank you for that work. This is my first budget cycle, so I don't know any different, so I look forward to maybe future easier years, if that's how it plays out. My one question is whether I'm thinking about this correctly, that the two major potential upsides are increased rate of recovery and potential monies coming out of the federal and state programs, and then the one significant risk on the down, maybe not significant, but the one known downside is the renegotiation of our contracts and their potential implications on personnel expense. Are those, is that the one big, non-included potential downside?
Kevin, or John, who wants to respond?
I'll, I'll. I think you're, I think you're very accurate, Alderman, and thank you for reminding us of those. Upside is, I think, as you just put it, as I said, I think the rate of the economic recovery will, looks like it's going to be faster by economic indicators that are being reported right now. And I thank you again, I forgot the American Rescue, every, there's so much in this year. The American Rescue Plan money, we still are waiting for the federal treasury guidelines, but it looks like about eight hundred thousand will come to the city in fiscal twenty-two, and then another eight hundred thousand in fiscal twenty-three. We'll get the guidance on how we can spend those. We think we have a good idea already. We'll sit down and work with the council when we get those. And the, the big expense that's yet unknown is the three collective bargaining agreements. We did not include the wage increases, and we have all their base wages that we're already paying them out, but there will be increases which will increase the budget. We'll bring back a budget amendment when those are settled. Likely that they won't be settled all at one time. They will probably be settled individually over successive months, but those are very good points, and I would agree completely with you.
All right, and thank you. No further comments. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashower.
I'd just like to thank staff for all their extraordinary efforts during a very difficult time.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry. Alderman Berry had to leave the meeting, I'm sorry. Alderman Davalos.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I kind of already said what I, what my feelings of appreciation were before, but just once again, thank you for the sacrifices on all levels for everybody.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. Yes, big picture, this is a very tough budget. It's going to mean some significant, long-term financial challenges, as we all know, but I have a lot of hope for the year to come looking a lot better than we're currently projecting in this budget, and I think it's the right decision to make those projections now on the basis of leaving out assumptions about future optimism, because we don't know what is going to come next, and COVID has been surprising us all, both in its severity and length, and we don't want to err on the wrong side when it comes to the city's finances and being responsible stewards of taxpayer money. So those are all my general remarks. I do have one small, specific question which just popped out at me as I was flipping through some of these pages, and that has to do with refuse stickers. I know we have a new, you know, totter-based contract that doesn't have refuse stickers anymore, but I still see a budget of over fifty thousand dollars for refuse stickers expenses in the finance department bucket, so I wonder if that's going to be changed or if that's just for the yard waste summer sticker program, or I know usually there's, you know, a revenue line and an expense line that kind of balances out here because we buy the stickers and sell them to the public.
Okay, question. Kevin, would you like to take that on?
Absolutely, Mayor. So that is one of the line items that I would like to have had more time to adjust. Because we didn't have any history of just use of yard waste stickers, we don't know how much our, our expenditures will actually be for only yard waste, because we, for so many years, have been selling stickers for garbage and yard waste. So what I would like to have done was had more time to adjust that down, but then it also would have meant that I would have adjusted down anything on the revenue side as well. So they're kind of a wash when that happens, so there's ultimately going to be no real effect on this in the long term, because, because whatever we buy, we sell for cost, so those two will wash each other out, and it's very likely that fifty-eight thousand dollars or so will not all be spent.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was my only specific question. I've had a great many detailed conversations with you and with the city administrator, and if I have more questions in the future, I'm sure we'll have lots of other opportunities to talk about it, so I won't take up everyone's time now, but thank you so much for your hard work on this.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Chrisell.
Yeah, nothing that hasn't been said already, just, you know, wanted to express my appreciation as well and all the hard work and teamwork. I mean, you know, every department touched this budget, and as mentioned already, you know, a normal year is difficult enough at a pandemic in here, so I just want everybody to know that it's really appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener.
Yeah, I'd like to just throw in my thanks to everyone who had anything to do with this budget. There was, it was developed in a good manner and great fashion, and appreciated all the updates as we went along, and also, it was a year full of sacrifices from every department as they decided not to get certain pieces of equipment, and they did a lot of belt tightening over the, trying to reduce expenses, and I appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson.
I just want to say thank you, too, because when we first started these things, and we've had an opportunity to work with some of the subcommittees, looking at the long-range programs and the financing and short-range, and I tell you what, at the very beginning of this whole fiscal year, talking about it, I didn't think we'd ever get out of the hole, but I really appreciate what John and what Kevin and everybody else has done, and I think somebody gets the magician of the year award for pulling the rabbit out of the hat, because we're extremely fortunate to be where we are today by the tremendous effort given by the people that work for the City of Warrenville.
Thank you, Alderman. Okay, we have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. Everyone has a chance to add their questions or comments, so we'll go for a roll call. Emily, please.
Alderman Berry.
She's not with us.
Sorry, come back. No. Okay. Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashower.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The City of Warrenville FY 2022 budget is officially adopted. Item seven B, FY 2021 financial update and discussion. This is in case we have anything to add that's of relevance. John, would you like to start off?
I think the cosmic forces are telling me not to, because all of a sudden I'm getting choked up here over the budget. I don't know. I will try really quickly. This is another report you've seen every month since the fiscal year twenty-one began because of the COVID issues. It is showing again, we're a little, overall, we're a little bit better than we had thought we might be, a little bit better than the prior month, but there's still, the numbers overall are still down substantially, and depending on the fund, some are worse than others. Obviously, hotel tax fund and the CMRP are the most impacted of the city funds, but general fund and others have been as well. I think the, the kind of philosophy that went along with the budget comments that you just heard is, together, we're all making it, council, staff, everyone is making it work through all the hard work and reductions in expenses, but the revenues have, have certainly been hurt, and that's the idea of this report, of course, is to reflect on the market-sensitive revenues of the city. And Kevin has also done a nice job of explaining the total general fund effect versus just the market-based revenues, but we are down, we remain down. Thankfully, the CARES Act money came in during the year to the city earlier in calendar twenty twenty, but fiscal year twenty-one, that certainly helped to offset some losses. Technically, it was legitimately applied to expenses that were extra for COVID-related things, but it did help us get through things. We had to pay for those expenses regardless because of the, the need during the pandemic, but getting that money was certainly helpful and appreciated, and we'll be happy to answer questions. Kevin probably has some more technical information about this report. I'll stop at this point.
Kevin, anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just want to add one more thing. We will provide one more update of this. The April, as you recall, we're doing this on a cash basis. There are a number of things that we report on in here that, that we receive early in the month of April to allow us to report this. For example, the sales tax and income tax and the things that are administered by the state happen early in the month. There are a few other things that happen during the month that don't happen in enough time to include on this report, and that would be like food and beverage tax, the amusement tax, local motor fuel tax, and then the hotel tax. So once we complete the receipt of those in April, we'll provide one last update that will include those four things that aren't on here yet, and we'll have a better picture where we ended up the year. It's not going to change, I wouldn't think, a whole lot, but we do want to reflect the complete cash receipts we had during the year, so we'll make sure we have that updated for the first meeting, probably the first meeting in May, and then we should be able to conclude doing this report on a monthly basis.
Great, thank you, Kevin. We'll go to the Alderman for questions or comments on this item, beginning again with Alderman Anderson.
I know what I value in this report is just watching for some momentum in the economy, and so, you know, my hope is as we go into next year, I'm not saying we have to regenerate this report, but finding ways to do our, our report outs that give us this same kind of window into hopefully emerging economic activity, especially in those funds that are, you know, are struggling. I was encouraged by the first one. I know it's a lower projected month, but seeing the general fund, state shared sales tax at budget was, was encouraging. So just thank you for the work on this, very helpful, and hope to see the economy reemerge.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashower.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Berry is back.
I'm back. The building hasn't burned down. Somebody just set their dinner on fire, that's all. I have no questions. It's very nice that the staff puts this whole thing together. It's very easy to understand. I appreciate all the work that they do to give us this report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos.
Yes, I don't really have any questions, but just a comment that I do have more, more hope. Each time this, this comes out, there's a little more hope here and there, and I'm just going to hang on to that and go forward, so I'm fine. I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
I mean, I guess my question is, why is staff suspending the report? I think it has been useful. I know you usually put out a quarterly financial update. Is that what we're going to be going back to again, or will there be a section in that about the specific effects of the pandemic?
Administrator Coakley? Oh, Kevin? I'm sorry. Finance Director Dollstrand.
Well, we could certainly return to doing this. We originally discussed this being only for fiscal twenty twenty-one, and we obviously would include any new impacts in the fiscal twenty twenty-two reports that we do, so I guess I was referring to this specific report. We certainly will include any changes, things that occur in upcoming financial updates.
Okay, I mean, I think specifically, you know, the total cumulative revenue losses is something that's going to be relevant for us to look at as a council and think about with respect to about with respect to the allocated rescue plan funding. So some numbers like that that go back to the beginning of the pandemic are going to be important to track. I, I guess, I'm just asking if there was some specific impetus. I know it is a lot of work for you to produce, but it feels to me like the pandemic is still ongoing and in particular that the financial impact to the city is still ongoing, even though our fiscal year is ending.
If it's the desire of the City Council, we could, I could formulate a new report like this for 2022. If that's the desire of the, of the City Council to do that. It is a lot of work, but if that's what we need to do, that, that's what we can do. We can discuss that as a staff to determine where we want to head with that.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. I'm sorry. Alderman?
No, just for, for my own part, I, I think that would be valuable if staff really feels that they have, you know, not enough time for this, then I would, I'd like to see it maybe every other month, perhaps.
It is Administrator Cokely?
Thank you. We'll, we'll look at what we need to do. Kevin is correct. We originally talked about doing a fiscal year '21 reports and it's the end of the fiscal year. So I think that was just a natural assumption. But it certainly has been helpful. I know that I've gotten a lot of comments, not just at meetings, from Aldermen about the value of this. So we'll look at it and, and determine what would be best to try to report that out. I'm hearing a couple of you saying this would be very helpful going forward, possibly in a bit different format. Let me see. Also, I know Kevin is willing to do whatever we ask him to do, but let me work with him and see if there's something that can be done maybe in a way that's a little less time-consuming. But we'll, we'll report back to however that would be, hopefully by sometime in mid-May.
Thank you, John. Okay, Alderman? All right. Very good. Thank you. Alderman Crissell? We're not hearing you, Alderman.
How about now? Try that. Does that work?
You're bad.
Embarrassing when the, when the, the IT guy can't figure out how to unmute his own microphone, but whatever. I, less bad. That's, if, if I learned anything through his process, it's Administrator Cokely's phrase of less bad. I remember looking at this when we first got this report and the first version of the report and, you know, trying to put the pieces together and figure this out. And it's, it's encouraging to see some of these numbers now and, and some of these collection factor percentages. So I'm, I'm encouraged. And I do find value in here. So if there's a way that we can continue seeing these things as we trend out of this, this pandemic, I think it'd be useful. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener.
Yes, thank you for the report. I have no questions or comments.
Very good. And Alderman Wilson?
No comment.
All right. Very good. I think we're done with that discussion then. We have nothing under unfinished business for this evening. We have no new business listed. We have no necessity for closed sessions. So we do need one more motion before we can go home. So who'd like to tackle that assignment?
Alderman Davalos, I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second Alderman Goodman.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Emily, please.
One last roll call. Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Crissell.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, Emily. Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Alderman Wilson, thank you. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance and your attention this evening, and we will see you next week at the same time.
Good night. Thank you, Emily. Good night. Good night.